Sure, the times of the games this year, we are, they've shifted up since they joined the Big Ten. Because I used to be able to go Sunday games and block in Sunday games. So the evening games are part of our schedule. It's just like my marshes. Now they're having it on Saturday, but like our girls are in basketball, you know, it's all that. See your vote games. So yeah, so I'm like, I was just looking at the schedule yesterday, I'm like, I'll still go. Yeah. Late games. I have a book, so maybe we'll go Friday. Yeah. I know, and we gotta get to one at some point. So.
Morning, bro. See, Ellen. See, Ellen. Oh, I just got. Okay, we have one minute. Right back every minute, one minute.
Buddies filling out their forms. I just want some. I said this one.
This one's very different than what we do in the city. This is much more, we'll all discuss that in a moment.
Yeah, town one. Get it, you know, notarized. Yeah.
Caterina, you about ready?
Down.
All right, welcome, everybody. We'll go ahead with roll call. Caterina?
Chair Greg Shelton.
Awesome.
Vice President Gray. And I'm Barbieri.
Here.
Diane Turner.
Here.
Keith Zuspin.
Here.
Laurie Strian. Marcy Hausman. Matt Colting. Dave Sudbury.
Here.
Dr. Schenfer. Robert Panil.
Here.
Sherry Orne.
Here.
Mrs. Stitzer. Tom DeSider.
There's everybody.
Okay, thank you. First off, we want to welcome new board members, Marcy Hausman from Sandy City, and welcome back Diane Turner from Murray. Wonderful to have you back, and so we'll go ahead with an oath of office. Caterina?
Oh, please stand. Madam Chair, just a point of order. Board member Hausman has been sworn in.
Oh.
And she, she'll jump on when she can, she's out of town.
Thank you. Diane?
Excuse me, be that for me. Hi, Diane Turner. Having been appointed to the oath of office. I was set for waste in the second district. I was set for waste in the second. Board of trustees, law of trust. Do solemnly swear, per firm. Do solemnly swear, per firm. That I will support, obey, and defend. That I will support, obey, and defend. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Utah. And the Constitution of the State of Utah. And then I will discharge the duties of my office. And I will discharge the duties of my office.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
We have the consent items, and I'll just take a motion or if people have questions or comments about the consent items. Make a motion to approve. Sherry.
This is Keith, right, second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. I'll open this up for public comments. If there's anyone here with the public that would like to take a few moments. Seeing that there is not, Caterina?
Yes, we have a couple comments.
We do?
Yeah.
I need.
I was just waiting. This is from Bill Iacella. 1398 East, 873 South. She spoke with him on his 23rd, 21th. And expressed her disapproval of raising the use of services 33% in 2015. Without restoring the once-in-year container delivery services for the long-term care if he wants to leave for the winter.
Okay, so the old scrap program. Okay, thank you, thank you for reading that in. Anything else, anyone? Okay, we'll close that with the comments, and we'll move on with the business items. 3.1, formal transition of Vice President Greg Shelton to Board Chair. So I'll take a motion for that.
Motion for formal transition of Board Vice Chair Greg Shelton to Board Chair.
Second. Sherry?
Yeah, off that.
Sherry Orne with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Guffler.
All right, and then a formal transition, do you want to read this in? Mr. Chair?
Sure, I guess I'm official now.
You're official.
Uh, can I get a motion for formal transition for Emily Gray?
I'll make that motion.
Second, Robert.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Well. Uh, so I guess now we're moving on to the interest of financial disclosure requirements.
Yes, as many of you have in front of you, the new conflict of interest requirement. So this is new legislation that was passed last year, HB 80, which requires all elected and appointed government officials aboard city councils, county commissions and councils throughout the state to answer a list of, a detailed list of questions relating to conflicts of interest and financial disclosures. This is similar to what the state legislators are already required to do, and they've just extended this requirement across the state to all government officials. It's required every year, you have to fill it out no sooner than January 1st, no later than January 31st. The district is required to put it on the website and have it on the website for the entire year, and then we also have to send a copy or send the link to the Lieutenant Governor's Office. By the way, I have that email address now.
Okay.
Send that to once we've got it.
Awesome.
If, if we don't have compliance, the, the law actually states that the district is supposed to fine you guys if you don't comply, and I really don't want to be in the business of fining. So it is, would be a new revenue.
Yeah. Revenue stream.
It's a little bit, yeah, it's a hundred dollars, so it's not going to go far. So one nuance of law says that, you know, because you, especially as appointed members, should also be doing this for your cities, that you don't necessarily need to fill out the form twice if you're already doing it for the city, you can give us that form. However, big caveat is from what I've noticed this process this month as I've been helping my districts is that I don't know if the cities aren't realizing that there's this new law or what, but a lot of the city forms that have already been filled out don't meet standards of this new law, and so I'm asking that if it does not meet those standards, I'm going to still ask you to fill out this form. So I don't think anyone here has had that issue, because I think we're just all filling out this form.
So we should also bring that form to our cities and say Tampa to dinner form.
Um, that's on you. I'm not your city attorneys, and I'm not going to advise this is what you guys are doing, but the way I read it is that, yeah, this is, this applied to everyone. I just made up this form, this isn't anything that a state gave me, but the law cross-references to another code section, which is the one that's applicable to the state legislators, and it's extremely detailed, and I just went through one by one and added every question that they wanted to have answered, and I know it's not fun, it asks you about your spouse and what they do for a living, and I know that that feels awkward for some people, but that's the law, so. There's any questions on how to fill out your form, I'll stick around after, I've had a few questions this month, so happy to answer. Oops.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? Hold on. General Manager's report.
All right. Well, there's a lot going on. There's a lot, yeah, there we go. So the district is in good shape. Helen will go over the financial report, which she'll see the numbers as we go, but I wanted to give you some updates, there's two updates and then, or excuse me, three updates and a couple of initiatives I want to go over with you. So to start off with, the first page and the cover page shows all of the tonnages that we collected with the many avenues that we move waste from residents and then also from our communities. So you can see that we are well worth our girth, we collected 148,000 tons of waste in all different shapes and sizes and colors last year. So if you'll jump to the next page, I'll give you a personnel update, and I, I did reach out to, to all of you just to go over these items to help expedite today's meeting. We have three positions that we were able to identify. As you know, we weren't always looking for any kind of cost-saving measures. It's never easy to go through a reduction in force, in fact, this is the first in Wolford history, hoping that it will be the last, but we never know. But there were three positions, one was the Quality Assurance Inspector position that was vacated when Trace Sandra retired last year, and in talking with the, the remaining staff that heads up the Sustainability and Quality Assurance, James and Kevin, they feel like they can absorb that, that increased workload and want to do their best to help us save money. The other two positions that were people in, as I discussed with you all, but just for public record, we had the Equipment Operator Apprentice Training Coordinator position, and that was added last, excuse me, April of 2023 for the apprentice program. And then, you know, hindsight being 2020, once things were up and running, there really wasn't a lot of workload there. So the, what's remaining with that will be absorbed with management and supervisors and our safety coordinator. We had the HR Payroll Specialist, that we were able to reduce that position, and Hazel and Lori McAllister, excuse me, will absorb some of that workload in, from that job. So the cost savings will be 300, just over $320,000 annually, that's including benefits, and then as I mentioned, that it will help to offset a large portion of that Equipment Operator Salary Market Adjustment that you made, or approved, excuse me, in 2024, and that was $372,000. The, so we'll move from 101 FTEs to 99, and as I requested, I would like to keep the Quality Assurance Inspector, just the FTE, and look at her if we need to reclass for, if we do a more frequent billing down the road, we may need an FTE, either Customer Service Representative or somebody help with billing and receiving, but we would come back before you and talk about that before we ever made that change. Then the interesting news of the 2024 truck sales, I won't get into a lot in strategy for public, you know, for the public portion of this, but just to, you all are aware that we did not receive good dollars and cents for those five trucks that we had go up last year with what is now J.J. Kane auctions. So we received a total of $5,600. So I will be expecting a letter from J.J. Kane with their offering, and then I'll bring it to, probably February, to discuss, and we can go into a closed session at that time if we need to have next steps. Yeah, and then the other interesting news, I'll put it that way, and another challenge is the truck purchases for this year is with the CNG trucks and the diesel trucks going up more than what we had budgeted, understanding that we had budgeted for eight side-load CNG trucks at 46, just over 436,000, and they gone up per truck, 23 grand. So the big question is, is do we want to stay with CNG? If we went all diesel and had eight diesel trucks, we would save about 400,000, is that right, Helen? Because it's $50,000 cheaper for a diesel truck, and understanding we have not tested diesel yet, we have the four that were, do arrive ended last year, but they have not quite got here yet, the four diesels that we ordered. So we haven't tested them, however, you know, there's pros and cons, and it's just, you could find anything out there to say that diesel's cleaner or CNG's cleaner, so I wanted to get some direction from you as a board. To have some cost savings is very appealing, as you can imagine. The question I think will be in the future is what will the price of fuel be? We have seen, and Helen has in her report, that CNG is going up and diesel is coming down, so what will that do in the future? And then the MPG's, we have not been able to test a diesel truck as far as MPG's, but we do know CNG gets less than two miles per gallon. So I wanted to have a discussion, dialogue from you all, and then receive directions.
Oops, that violates again.
For CNG, it is less than two miles per gallon, and with diesel, we don't know for sure, the last ones we had were about two miles a gallon.
How much less?
I'm sorry.
How much less are CNG's than two miles a gallon?
I think it's 1.89.
No.
Yeah.
What, what do they, I know it's always a subject, whatever, but what do they advertise their?
The diesels? That's a good question, I don't, I know that we have some information from Salt Lake City and Draper, but Draper is the one that tells us that they're getting about three miles a gallon, but we don't know for sure if that's, we know that we keep a lot better data than many other entities out there, so that's why we wanted to test those four, but we, we'll be able to test them before we need to place an order.
Well, and considering the previous item on the truck sales, usually we get a much higher rate back on those gas-powered trucks, so I think that serves us well, where CNG trucks, they don't go for as much and they're more difficult to unload, no pun intended.
Because of the infrastructure.
Yeah, yeah, it's an infrastructure market, and it's just much broader with the diesel than I have. People buy them, yeah. Smaller towns. Eric? Sure, great.
Oh, yeah, so.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
So I'm actually going to throw out something, I think we ought to actually go all to diesel trucks this time around for our purchases. I'm looking at the environment, what's going on right now in the government right now, and the cost of CNG, and also the recyclability and the, we can get for them after the fact, and to be honest, when I started passing these things out, buying CNG right now does not make sense in our current environment, and I think we ought to go to all diesel this time around and save that money.
What's the impact of the year to our air?
It's so hard to know, to be honest, and that's why we wanted to get four and test them. It, it's hard to get the emissions piece, so that was going to be our plan, is to test that ourselves. I can say that with the, the DEF, and I, forgive me, is it just Diesel Efficiency Fuel Systems? Yeah, those have become more cleaner, and that was the purpose of that regulation, was to make sure that diesel was cleaner when the emissions off, go off gas, so to speak, so that's the question that.
I think that's.
You could, yeah, you have to, and you can find information that will tell you both, so it's, it's, that's what's so hard, and that's why we wanted to test.
That's what, and we asked for that a while back, and then you could never receive any confirmed date, and so it's like when Larry came, because that was really the biggest driver in changing, and it's like there's nothing that can confirm it, and there's been so much regulation on diesel and the changing in that, as per the department and stuff, and it's like, I, I would second what Larry's opinion is, I think that, and I don't think it's ever a problem to have some diversity in your fleet either. I don't, I, I have those worries about going, and it's so heavy to see if something changes, if you're not able to get fuel or something like that, you're just stuck, and so it's, to me, it makes sense to have that diversity, save a big chunk of money, and I, all the data, the reason they made that BE up is to try and take care of the problem and manage, so.
It's done.
Yeah.
And I'm sure maintenance is less on a diesel too, a lot more.
I have to wonder.
Let me clarify one other thing, maintenance is much less on a diesel, just know, and you actually have more people who can work on it, so the cost of working on it is much less, parts are easier to get, so that's cheaper. And the last thing that I think is most important is diesel trucks are more recyclable when they're no longer usable, you can break them down, they're more usable, CNG trucks are not, and that's the one aspect we do not look at when we look at these vehicles and stuff, when we start looking at electric and that, those batteries are not recyclable, they do not break down, there isn't a place to tear them apart and recycle the parts and bits, they just sit in a big pile someplace and there's no place to do with them, we haven't gotten to a point where we can do something with those at this time. So when we start talking about what's recyclable, what can we break down, what can we do, these trucks are still way more recyclable than a CNG truck, and so you've got some, you've got some dichotomies in this industry, when we talk about recyclability, clean air and those type of things, because it might be green in one aspect, but way, way less green in another, and always take that into consideration, that's where I struggle sometimes.
Well, why are we moving to CNG in the first place?
It was cheap, a lot cheaper per gallon comparatively, and that's why we made that transition, and then also with the DEF coming online, it took some time to do that, so we did switch to CNG, that was a board directive and decision way back, and then, you know, I've heard, you know, government, we don't go back and look, right, we don't go back and change things, but we, we might need to, especially with the savings, and I, and I'll be honest, I was always on the fence, because I really wanted to know, I wanted to have proof.
Right.
Right, I love data, and that's how I always manage, but just to put it in perspective, so we'll have four diesels coming in, hopefully next month, and then if we were to do all eight, we would have a total of 12 diesel, and then 56 minus 12 of this, the rest will be CNG.
Yeah, I don't think, I think this will give us a better understanding of the difference between the two, I don't think adding eight more diesel is going to make a huge difference to the, where we're at right now, and it'll give us a better measurement of the vehicles, because it'll give us a bigger number to actually measure, and I, I really think for the cost and for the environment we're in right now, I think this is the way to go, and I'm actually going to make the motion that we actually make the next eight diesel trucks.
I'm set.
That's all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Hey, those board members, Stitzer?
Jeff.
Correct.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, moving into initiatives, as I mentioned, we want to hold on to that FTE, we want to explore increased billing frequency, again, I think it's a matter of going back and looking, can we do something different to, one, improve our cash flow, understanding that if we increase billing from quarterly to, say, monthly or bimonthly, that is an increased cost, so Helen and Matt have put together some dollars and cents, if you wouldn't mind just scrolling down just slightly, have a list of pros there, which is a little longer than the cons, one of the biggest things is the security, and Helen, Helen, do you want to chime in here? Please feel free, because you did a lot of this analysis.
Okay, yeah, we have the security with the improved cash flow, which for me is a, is a really big driving force for it. We bill right now, we bill quarterly, and so we get a lot of money coming in after that, that quarterly billing, and then it kind of, you know, tapers off, but of course, every month, we're still spending money every month, and so I just don't, we're going to have a slide later on that kind of shows our cash position right now, and I just don't want to get into a position where we're having to, where those two lines cross, or our cash balance crosses with whatever we're spending for a month, and have to make a decision on what we're going to pay and what we're not going to pay for that month, and that's, hasn't happened. But it is.
It was close this year, last year.
Yes.
It was close.
And then keeping higher dollar amount in accounts does earn us more interest, and that is represented here on this, these numbers below. Increasing cash receding for the current year with fewer amounts in accounts receivable, so I think we would, you know, obviously collecting faster is going to lower our accounts receivable, I think it'll also allow us to find problems, errors, customers can find problems and errors on their bills faster, refunds will be lower. Let's see, yeah, catching changes of ownership sooner to reconcile accounts and receive payments by the seller, and then also, you know, this year, as we all know, we had a pretty significant fee increase, and for somebody paying quarterly, that's going to feel like a $19 increase, where it's a $6.50 monthly increase, you know, for them, it's a $19 increase, because that's what they're paying at the time, and I think, you know, customers who don't budget on a monthly basis and then, you know, save it up and then pay it are definitely going to feel that more, so I think that these B increases are easier for our customers to manage and pay if they're on a monthly or bimonthly basis rather than a quarterly basis, so from a customer service perspective, I think it's, it's a better situation. Excuse me, the cons, as listed here, are, you know, we will have increased workloads for, mostly for, well, the billing, of course, because it would be more frequent, but then also for cash receding, because now we have a lot of extra payments coming in more frequently, and a lot of those payments are electronic payments that we don't, all we have to do is upload and post, done, but we do have payments that we have to do some research on, it takes some time, and those, of course, that will might go away with the monthly billing situation, and so that increased workload will have to be accommodated, and then, as Pam said, for that purpose, the possibility of adding or reclassifying the vacant position that we have in our budget right now to try to help out, we, if we go forward with this, if you decide that this is something we want to do, we will try very hard not to add, you know, another person or have to use that money, I think we can do it, I really do, but it could be difficult, and so we're, I'm not exactly sure if that's going to really be a possibility, but I think we can do it. And so below that, we have a quarterly basis for, because we're billing quarterly, so this would be one quarterly billing, switching from quarterly to either a monthly billing or a bimonthly billing. We do have a column there, that's a correction, that is my bad, on the bimonthly billing, I calculated those increased costs incorrectly, and so the correction column is the correction, obviously. So for one quarter, we have revenue of 6.6, so $6,630,000 for a quarterly billing. If we changed to monthly, we would collect formerly $420,000 earlier than we did before, and if we went to bimonthly billing, we'd collect $2,210,000 earlier, that, of course, is going to translate into more interest, we just calculated this interest at 4%, right now, the peat of interest, the public treasurer's, excuse me, fund is at 4.67%, so it's a little bit higher than the 4%, but it has been coming down just a little bit month-over-month this last year, so we used 4% for that calculation, and then, of course, we're going to have increased printing and postage costs for a monthly bill, that will increase it on a quarterly basis, $92,000, for a bimonthly bill, that would increase it on a quarterly basis, $23,000, and then there's an increase, of course, for transaction fees for credit card payments, and that amounts to $90,560, $592,000 and $4,300 for a monthly billing situation, and for bimonthly, it would be $22,600. And for bimonthly, it would be 22,648 for the online payments. And then $2,901 for the lockbox check payments that we have. We also have block in payments or call in payments that we take credit cards for, but that's all on a percentage basis. So the dollar amounts are going to stay the same for, but they're actually charged, so that amount is not going to be affecting this. And then we added an app for turnover and training costs. There will be some training, of course, having to be done. We don't really know what that's going to look like yet. I don't have a structure in my head for who's going to be doing what yet. But we just added this away and this is an amount that Matt calculated a while ago for what we think that might be. So, and that would be one time, not quarterly. So the totals are below that. And again, that's a quarterly total because we're now billing quarterly. So our increased cash flows is on that first row, which we've already gone over. The increased costs are added together there. So for a monthly basis, your quarterly increased cost would be $213,791. For a bimonthly billing basis, the quarterly increased cost would be $73,173,103. So we can see that the net increased cash inflows, taking that net difference, would be 4.235,675 for a monthly basis. And then if we went bimonthly, it'd be $2,149,000. So. And are there questions about that? It's kind of.
A lot. How do you do about this part of the cost? Did you add in this paid salary into your cost calculation?
I just paid salary for the new, for somebody, if we have to add somebody. That, I did not calculate into that. It could be a part of this training and turnover costs, but I did not add a new person in to these costs. Because as I said, I do think we can do it without doing that.
So I have a question. What's our delay with, delay with notice on our accounts? The, you know, people not paying their bill?
We have a pretty high payment rate. I think it was, I think we have about 13% who are late when I calculated that. And we can, we'll see a little bit more about that when we go into the certification slide that I have here. It will show us the number of accounts and the dollar amounts that we send to certifications. So.
Do we do any incentive for people to receive their bills online?
Right now, to my knowledge, we don't have an actual incentive to do so as far as like a cash discount or, or anything like that. But we do have, that's actually one of our, one of my plans to kind of do a push for people to get online, pay online, go on auto pay, get e-bills. Because that, of course, will mitigate that increased cost for printing and postage.
How, what's the difference to people who do online?
I have a piece of paper sitting on my desk that tells me that. And I'm thinking that the online payments are about, I want to say at least 75%. We have people who pay also like with a bank bill pay, where, you know, they go on their bank and they say, pay, we'll provide this amount of money. And those are also, I consider those electronic payments because those go, those go through our express bill pay online payment portal. So.
And that's included in this 75%?
Yes, yes.
So for today, we're just asking for direction to continue on with the exploration. And then we can come back with more information. Although this is something we would like to roll out sooner than later. The, I think the reality is it might be 2026. But we want to continue the exploration and gather information, bring it back. The reason why bimonthly is on here is that the Mount Olympus Sewer Improvement District, which is our sewer for many of Mill Creek and other cities, used to be quarterly. And then they went to bimonthly for the exact reasons that are listed up here for the pros. More cash flow coming in, a higher amount of year end cash versus what's going to be an AR. So we want to, you know, talk to Steve Rohr over there, and I did say that correctly, to find out for sure how they did it and what's the benefit. Our billing system is actually built for monthly. We reprogrammed it to be quarterly. So we have to wonder if we do monthly, if it's going to smooth out a lot of the issues that we have with our database. So anyway.
Yeah, I think you should just go forward and, and shoot for a monthly bill. And I think if we can, if there's any way that we can encourage people to do online processing and even get rid of their, their letter in the mail every month.
Yeah.
Shift, if you are shifting to monthly, is the transition with express bill pay, you just send them the notice and then they, they send it versus, is there any other electronic communication needs to be with the payment portal? You're switching it from quarterly to bimonthly or monthly?
We do have a plan. It's, we don't have a logistic plan yet, but we do have a plan that we will be informing customers in several different ways. It will be on social media. It will be, they will be getting emails if we have their email address, we will send them emails. That can be done, I believe, through express bill pay and also by us. And then we also will be putting notices on the bills. And we might even do a bill insert so that people will actually read it and pay attention to it when they get it. So we do have a plan to notify people in several different ways, many times. So it's not, we don't want people to be surprised by this.
I was, I was a little concerned that, that the payer, express bill pay, will they be able to transition? Oh, because I guess.
Oh.
They, they just, you send them a notice that is to, and if I sign up, I'm signed up, they just automatically can't.
Yeah, I think, I believe that with express bill pay, everything is based on the due date. If the due date changes, if there are more due dates in there, I don't think it's going to have an impact on express bill pay just because of their programming. But I personally will call them, have a conversation with them about it anyway. I'm planning on doing that regardless. So I will definitely ask those questions to make sure.
Make sure that, that transition, if you do that, will actually work.
Right, yeah. Excellent question.
Any other game button? I guess so. Hit it at every quarter.
Diane.
Diane, turn to city. But I would like to know is what other companies are doing? And Murray, we have one of the one, you know, company that services on a, regarding, she picked out itself. And wondering what other businesses are doing. Do you guys know? Do you have any sense of that? How do they, how do they charge monthly? I like the, whatever.
So for haulers, I think they build your city and then your city would build your residence. I think for storm drains, is that a monthly billing? Or as far as maybe, board member or maybe.
Well, I think, no, you're good. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, the coordinates and all.
Yes. Yes, it would.
Yes, and I can tell you that Sandy City at least, that's where it came from. They do bill monthly. They bill for waste collection services. They outsource their waste collection, but they bill monthly. And then I believe that most of the other cities that are billing are billing a halfway as well. So I think it's very, it's more common for a monthly bill than a quarterly bill or a bimonthly bill for waste collection services.
Even all about the city, okay, because you've been attaching it to your water, but any, any utility.
They're together.
Yeah.
So it's just attached to our rolling. Yeah, so it's monthly.
One thing I'd like, one thing I'd like to see is, next to your corrections there, I'd like to see what our current quarter figures look compared to those same numbers. This, that's right information.
Instead of just the.
It's hard to, so, oh, we're at, what is this really gaining? You know, and I'm not necessarily for or against it, but I like to, I like to see that information. You know, you did mention more or less incentivizing people to do online notification, online bill pay, as we made a promote that, especially if that's costing us less money. I think it's a bright idea, so. Any other discussion on this? Or should we go ahead and give direct?
Direction to move forward with more information?
Yep.
Okay. Awesome. So the next one, the next initiative is doing a customer satisfaction survey. And we haven't done one of these for a while. So the, you know, the question comes up, you know, with the thought of having another fee increase in 2026, 2027, should we ask the questions from our residents? And we can also ask how about frequent, about billing, right? So would they prefer monthly, quarterly, kind of get some feedback that way. But other questions to ask would be, would residents be willing to go to biweekly recycling to prolong the next fee increase? Not reduce their fee, but to prolong the next one? And then just give a dollar, estimated dollar amount to save? You know, scrapping the scrap, so to speak. If, if people wanted to do away with that, that would save roughly a dollar 20 per home per month. And I don't know how deep we would want to get because if we talk about leaves, Christmas trees, that's not a huge savings. And then, you know, the thought is, understanding that if we take something away or change in that integrated waste collection system, the tonnage is not just going to go away. So we, for the residential collections, we did almost 139,000 tons last year of, again, those different types of wastes. So if we changed to biweekly, where would that extra go? Probably in the garbage can. If we did away with the 6,000 tons of scrap, which that's that bulky stuff, where's that going to go? So just those thoughts. But I just want to get direction from you. Would you like me to proceed? And we, we as staff will do this all in house. Renee's going to help me to develop. We're basically going to take old, older surveys that we've done and add in some of these questions if you all are comfortable with that.
I think that's a great idea. And I also think that it helps people understand how much that different program adds to their bill. Just even if they're answering like, oh, this is, this only costs me a dollar or whatever. As they're looking at this. And I also like, you're suggesting asking them about changing billing, what their practices.
Good. Great.
Diane turned to city. It's very helpful for me, you know, for our collective officials to have some of the family access. We're kind of split in Murray and it's really helped us. So, you know, we always share, well, we want to kind of, so having, having some statistics and specific information for us would be.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it's always good to, to involve the public as much as we can and let them know what's going on and be as transparent as we can. But at the end of the day, we also have to understand that sometimes they don't understand the definition. So we have to make that best decision for them. But it's still good to involve them and they take the temperature of these days. Everybody?
I think, I agree with that, what you're saying. And I think that's the hard part of that question. Because this is, should we ask to reduce, should we have to reduce costs? Reducing costs is great. But there's a bigger picture for some of it. It's so difficult to do that in an online survey. That's why what you said, it's like something you see that your picture by recycling, how much are biweekly? There's some hard arguments on both sides. And it's not just, it's, if you look at the recycling industry and know that, okay, all of the boxes, they're sitting in some warehouse forever trying to store them until that part. And then our fees fall to this and then sometimes they come back down here. And they don't understand the history of shipping and all the China and all those kinds of things that are part of that. The why it really started in the first place, how far behind the US is in any, any kind of recycling capabilities. You know, those kinds of things are realities. And I, and so sometimes we do things that aren't feel good because it makes people feel good that they're recycling. But really what is the problem with the recycling industry? And you can't communicate that on our online survey. So that's the difficult part about getting information back from, you know, getting feedback from them. It's just, it's a much bigger picture of how to communicate it in one sentence survey.
Emily. On that note, which is different topic, and I don't know if this is going to open a huge can of worms, but kind of responding to public comment there. Was they, I mean, I think we've all gotten that comment ad nauseam. So I don't know if there's a way to address that or put an education piece in if we're sending that out. Because I, when I talk to people, I explain the background and they don't like it because everyone just wants to talk. It's, they're like, okay, well, at least it makes sense. I don't know if there's a way to include that in or best stuff the right venue. I just, I understand people's frustration. I think we all share it because we all would love to have that whole program back. But it's not simple. I don't know if there's a way to kind of, maybe there's just something to think though.
Same problem, yeah.
Then we certainly can. Go ahead, Kevin. Please. So there, online folks, we have somebody that is unidentified with just a phone number, a 435, and then 59 at the end. Can you hear me? No, she's labeled.
We've talked about that label.
Oh, yeah, do you want to send them a message? Renee? And we'll try to get identity. But so far, I'm hearing to go ahead and draft something up. And it is possible to put like an intro for trap, an intro for recycling. And, you know, we'll just try to shorten the number of questions that we.
Yeah, a very expensive survey.
Yeah, that's, that's why we're doing in-house.
Do we have the ability to label the outside of our bills with a, like the envelope or a special notice inside or anything like that? For, for when we have really special announcements, like potentially bill schedule change? You know?
Yeah.
That's something that maybe, let's know.
Well, that is something that, that may be possible. I don't know for sure here with the data centers who we use. I know that in Sandy, we use a company that did do that. There, of course, is an extra charge for that, but yes. And I have an idea that we will be able to do that with the data center.
This, just maybe a thing that we could list out on the side, which is, does that type of the increase these costs? Or, you know, we've got special things going on.
Oh, good question. Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll proceed and bring back a draft next, next month?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the next one is another initiative. We wanted to bring this back to you as a forward, that thought of limiting repeat reservations for the scrap program and get direction from you, the formal direction. Renee can give you a debriefing and overview, overview, excuse me.
Brew sounds good, too.
Yeah. I think I need my coffee brew. Yeah.
All right. So just to help rush some public results off, especially that we have announced here, here is some information and data by Aria to pull from 22 to 23. And the, and the green highlighted rows right there, how many reservations were repeated? So we're looking at our so, so actual resident addresses from 22 to 23. And then in a food, tracks repeat reservations from 23 to 24. And then that final column over to the right that's in clear, that shows the increase of repeat reservations from those two years. As you can see on the far, far, or far, column right there, most of the communities had an increase of repeat reservations. And instinctually, I'm thinking it's because of books that they, they now understand how a process works and how they're staying up at midnight to, you know, get their reservation there quickly. And so, so this, I think, will help with your decision and direction on which way you should go, right? So it almost feels like, as we all discussed, that if we don't help in altering years for communities, they might feel it's more of a miserable process.
I think that makes a lot of grace. I mean, there's, there's people who will figure out, okay, this is one of the better.
And, oh, I was just going to say again, some feedback that I've heard from teenagers internally is that, you know, we do pass on neighborhoods, they count designated. you know, we do have some neighborhoods that have designated funds that, that do this for their communities. And they're like, what happens then for the next year? And so that's where I think we really encourage them to go out and maybe ask a neighbor to be, okay, this is your turn. Should they do that?
Also now there's a place for the special instructions because I'm one of those people and I, we have and basically our whole neighborhood. They come in and just dump stuff out there. So if, if there is something like that in the last or more, more dead area, they, they could have somebody else register, but that's the other address. So this is a community one that we track viewers, please don't be here at the same address that's. It could be something like that. Somehow the community.
I know I've said this before and I can't remember the inspire wasn't working works, but we're going to say it again about. I've had a number of people request not having the, you know, but at midnight, that's if you're working or that's difficult for people. So.
Yeah. One of, one of the challenges that we have with that is, is because of customer service, he might open at eight o'clock. He's just able to get into where, you know, you currently can't for all the customer calls. And, and so my, my very committed customer service manager would be up at midnight to answer questions. And she's, you know, on there to help with anything. And so it helps spread some of that. You know, in, in some communities, we're sold out in, in, you know, three minutes, you know, but others, you know, they did, you know, last night or something. So.
We've got a comment online, Tom, about it?
Yeah, I'm curious about what other board members have heard. I have been told by some members in my community that they don't support limiting repeat reservations because they have typically, like there's typically one person in their neighborhood who has like a deep driveway who just requests it. And then the rest of the neighborhood uses that too.
Thanks, Tom. That kind of does so good.
Yes. I'm, so here in Copperton, we have a very, very small population. So now that we have figured out how to do the reservations a little bit differently, we're Copperton's concerned. And we're not lumped into some of the larger cities where it's pulling out before we have an option. I would be heavily against limiting repeat reservations. Our population is small enough that it can definitely handle it. And we do have shared driveway situation. We also have a lot of renting situations. So to echo a little bit of what Tom said, we have heard from our community that they are not in favor of limiting that. And we also have to, we have certain people who will rent and then share with neighbors because they may have an additional driveway. So something to consider when we make this, this decision, that there are communities who are, are a little bit more unique.
Yeah, one side of America's thought, but is, is, do they always have a hundred percent of people who want to get it? Or do they have a waitlist on Copperton? That they would have a waitlist.
So, so before, to answer that, just living here. Before last year, we had a lot of conversation about how certain areas were lumped in with other larger areas. And before, when the reservations were made, they were actually a part of pyramids. And there were two different areas of pyramid on that same list. So there were quite a few people in Copperton who were waiting until midnight and trying to get one of those. And they were being told they were on a waitlist automatically. But we, I did bring that to this board and I've also talked with Pam outside of the board to kind of come up with something that works a little bit better and matches our unique situation. Last year it ended up working really, really well. But again, just with the small population, you're going to have a lot of repeats here. There's not, not a big enough area that you're going to have every single person up here do that. And I think just us on our own, I don't think we ever sell out. So. Or conserve all of the containers.
All right. Yeah, that's really the question because I, I agree with you. One side never fits off of. Cause I don't think that I think here is to say, we won't allow repeat. It's just 100% to say prioritize people who didn't get a chance last year. So if everyone in your community is getting a chance, it really wouldn't affect you if we, if we do that. Is that, does that make sense, Tessa?
In a way, because I do know there are people each year that secure those and they're usually the same people. I personally haven't seen the exact names and locations of each of the dumpsters that have been reserved over the past several years here. So that would be interesting to see, to see how many repeats we actually have here. But I do know that we have certain individuals that do end up getting them each year. And I know that they do share with some of the neighbors, especially because we have property management rentals here. And a lot of those have been incredibly hard to get in touch with and get the approval prior to the window that it needs to be reserved in.
Renee, is it Anna with Taylor'sville? Is it possible to send out the notices based on the city?
So I, I'm just trying to know now, I think that if we decided that that's it, and all the centers of order to say, perhaps if a community is this size or smaller, they remain on the same type of reservation system that we have current. We can do that.
Yeah, I think it would be really doable on, yeah, if that one your system.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Just to where it's like maybe we determine what that breaking point is essentially to say, okay, maybe Coppertons and their smaller areas. Yeah, to stay on the current system, those that are in the larger areas, that's where we focus more on that priority level on reservation.
So is that natural work? So that was.
I've actually felt that that's probably the best approach when we've had several of these different conversations. All in all, whenever we've talked about this program, we've always kind of fit a different scenario. And I think that each one of our communities are awesome and unique in their own ways. And I think if we can make it to where it works for all of you and the cities you're living in, and as well as some of the smaller cities that don't necessarily have this issue, it'd be a win-win.
So, so the question is, do you, do you have to use a different software to accomplish this? Or could you just, you can not even personally be the customer.
Yeah.
To decide all around. So I, I've heard then let's, you know, if a community wants to opt out of a repeat restriction. And again, it's not a restriction. It's, it's a first or second priority. So what if people, or if a community doesn't want out of that?
Cause that's maybe each community can just decide. Not even based on size or anything, we can just go back to our councils. Because, because we have, it's easy to store. Yeah, it is. We've got priority or CDA now. And so we're ready to do that. And we call up a system internally to where we're able to do, I'm calling it really very special. And just to where those that were on the priorities cancellation list that didn't get they would be really very special. Yes, they would.
Roots.
Awesome.
Any other discussion?
So just to answer board member desiring, it's not based on the size of the municipality, right? Just to, because Mill Creek is the largest of our cities. Okay. Okay, great.
So I'm sorry. We probably would need to know who is going to opt out of the meat process pretty quickly. We have to do a lot of for running in the, in the background to get ready.
Is the next month's meeting soon enough?
Yes.
So if everybody's okay, take it back to your community councils. Have your decision by next month or email Renee as soon as possible.
It is possible to be great. I think by end of February.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I'm really grateful for how that. Absolutely. I know it's a touchy subject. Just trying to say, it's, it's something that we love to provide. So as much as we can part.
I know, I know for a fact that our community greatly appreciates it because not everybody's got a truck that came down from the bottom. You know, for a number of years, but whenever they've liked a lot of them, is that maybe they don't want to be anywhere. So it's definitely an amazing program. I guess we're on to come again.
I'm going to turn it over to Helen for the fourth quarter of 2024. Financial report.
That's okay. It always goes back to Pam first anyway.
They're all good.
Okay, so Renee, if you could dance a slide one, please. Thank you. So this is the financial report for the quarter ending December 31st. For December 31st is also our fiscal year end. And so just a disclaimer out there that we do not have everything in yet. So these are not final numbers for December 31st. However, this first page is the revenues and you can see that revenues are posted at 90%, 90.47% of the budget we expected to come in. But if you take out the 3.388 that we expect to use for fund reserves or net position, we actually have posted 101% of revenue. So we're doing pretty well that way compared to the budget for this year. If you want to move to the next slide, please. The next slide is personnel expenses. And again, there are still entries to be done. These are not final numbers. We have the payroll accrual, compensated absences, pensions, OPEB entries that need to be done. I want to point out on this one again, that we did change genders for our 401ks from Mission Square to URS, and that came with a GL account change. So the line item for supplemental 401k is not actually 616% over budget. If you bet that against the social security and ICMA line item, that will give you a real number and they're fine. So 92% of personnel expenses have been spent. But we have had some vacant positions throughout the whole year. So that's why we're not up to 100 there. If there are no questions, then we can move on to operating expenses. Again, just my disclaimer, not final numbers. But we are at 94% of operating expenses that we've expended for the year. And you can see that fuel is under expended by $322,000. That's because of a price change that we'll see in a minute. And then maintenance is overspent by $262,000. Not terribly unexpected considering the, the state of, you know, the economy right now. But overall, we're under spent on the operating expenses, which is a great thing. For capital expenditures, we had budgeted $6 million, which included carryover from prior years. And we spent for 2024, $4,303,767. And if there are no questions on this slide, I can give you detail of those capital expenditures on the next slide. Oh. Oh, that's okay. Yes. Okay. So our capital expenditures, you can see what we spent in that middle column under actual amount. We did do some fuel island improvements for the CNG fuel island for $182,000 in 2024. And then also we spent $4.1 million on trucks that were ordered in 2023, but not received until 2024 and therefore paid for in 2024. So that is the detail of our $4.3 million expenditures. We do have some trucks that were for 2024 that we've ordered, those Ford Vias, I believe. We ordered those in 2024, have not received them yet. So they will be paid for in 2025.
If I may add the caveat that we did pay for the chassis in Ford. Is that correct? And then we'll pay for the bodies.
Okay. The next slide is our cash balances. And we can see this kind of plunging gray line at the bottom of 2024, unfortunately. The reason it's, it's dipping down in the summertime there is because of those capital expenditures from 2023 that we paid for. And I don't know if you remember from prior board meetings, but we had discussed that we predicted $6 million in cash at the end of December of 2024, and we're at 5.9 million. If you look up at the table at the top under December for 2024. So we were pretty close in that. The reason that we have this jump from October to December is because of those certifications that we collected that was over $2 million for 2024. Okay. And the next slide will explain our fuel expenses a little bit. We can see that we did spend, as we already discussed, less money than even budgeted and less money than 2023 for fuel. The price of fuel went down. If you look at the graph on the right, diesel fuel went from $3.80 in 2023 to $3.15, which is average in 2024. And CNG went from $2.32 to $2.80. Of course, 92%, if you look at the table below that, of our fuel purchases were for CNG. So that is why it was under budgeted. We actually purchased more fuel but paid less than 2023 because of those price increases. And then the next slide is our maintenance graph. And it shows that jump that we talked about from 2023 to 2024. And then the fact that we are over budget in 2024. See the expenses there? And then the block underneath the top block is just expenditures in the fourth quarter of 2020. Okay? The next slide is recycle tons. So that has been decreasing. And I believe that one of the primary causes of that, please correct me if I'm wrong, is the actual weight of the recycled materials has decreased because of cardboard, right? So much cardboard with all the deliveries of everything. So, and then we've also added the contamination rates year over year right below that. And you can see we're at 22.96% contamination in 2024, which is 2.49% less than it was in 2023. And all the way from 2021 down to 2024, it's really decreased because you can see in 2021 it was 37%. So it's really nice, you know, been decreasing nicely there, I think.
Well, not unless you all have questions.
Questions, yeah.
All right. Next slide is our indoor recycling costs. Year 2024 is the gas line that's blue with the little red dots. And you can see that's falling right in the middle of everything, of the, of the other years. And that of course is a commodities-based cost on how that's calculated, that we're right, right there in the middle. Not much to see there as far as I'm concerned, but if there are any questions, we can probably answer those.
And one of the thoughts I've had is to bring back a pricing index with just the percentage of materials and the, the type of material that are in there. That show you what is in that blue can. And I can kind of give you a rough idea of the pricing because it does fluctuate, right? So when I tell you the percentage and I can say that cardboard is just over 50% of what is in that blue can. And then I'll bring that back next, next month for my GM report. That might be helpful.
This is a silly question, but how many people break down their boxes in the can?
Not enough.
Cause, cause that's another thing too. We, we talked about people that have these, these whole things. And sometimes I'll put something in, I'll be like, are you guys, you guys, there's other people that will ask a couple of things. And I was like, break your boxes down. Have this. And so I wonder if we talk about how cool they are in relationship to biweekly or, you know, those kinds of things. And I think some of that is because they're not contacting the trash that can go in there and empty my space. And it's again, our hard picking it up, doesn't weigh anything. No, the product, we won't, I have to pack it in the truck, but.
Yeah.
Just, just curious.
Yeah. If not enough people break down their boxes or fold them. I guess that's the thing is we, we say break it down, but a lot of people are like, what does that mean? Well, how about fold it, you know, take the tape off and just squish it. That would be helpful. But yeah. It, it is something that James, our sustainability coordinator and Kevin, the QAI, constantly try to educate people with. And I can tell you, our drivers will say, could you please tell them to break down their boxes? Yeah.
Even in the midst of like, I think.
Okay. The next slide is refuse tons. And we were pretty close to last year on that, just about 350 tons over last year for that. But you can also see where we're taking the refus and a huge majority of it is going to the South Valley transfer station. And then a little bit, then the next highest is the Salt Lake Valley landfill. And then Trans Jordan after that, Trans Jordan is the most expensive place to dump it. So. The next slide is certifications. And I've added the table here for what you usually see that shows the number of parcels that are associated with each year. And we can see that the original amount that we certified for 2024 was $2,697,714. And, um, what the leftover, the outstanding balance from that certification is $364,556. That is 1,814 parcels that owe that $364,000. And we originally for 2024 sent 13,588 parcels. So that's a 13% amount that's left outstanding. As we go back for years, you can see it goes back to 2016 with just one parcel owing for 2016 through 2018. Customers can go and ask for an extension from the county and pay their property taxes. And that can be granted year over year, and that's what's happened in these prior years. And then if we, over the next page, if there are no questions on certifications, um, we have, we have the refunds, customer refunds that were just in the quarter, quarter of 2024. We have 46 refunds totaling $9,384. Uh, most of those, 28 in fact, were just refunds on closed accounts. And, excuse me, we had one person who accidentally paid us their mortgage, so of course we gave that back to them. Um, and then, we can just bring this camera.
Not so long as trash, but at least. At least once a quarter, it happens. It can change.
Okay, and I think that's the end of my presentation.
Shout out to Helen because she did add more data in there to give those numbers of the parcels that are actually, um, that we refunded and, uh, for the certification. So thank you, the historical information. Yes, Rachel and myself, we're revisiting the policy that we brought before you in December regarding private roads. And, um, this is just a recap. We, um, talked about adding the property unit, so defining that, making sure that it is defined in this particular SOP or, excuse me, policy, and it'll be in our standard operating procedures as well. Um, so we, there is a process for a new build that they go online, they request our service, and then we automatically flag anything that's on a private rotor in an HOA. In the past, we would automatically decline that because we have that, that clause that if a private hauler is, uh, available, that we would not provide the service. But that automatically threw us out in cases of a tear down rebuild where we may want to go ahead and service on a private plane. And that was that, um, parcel in Holiday City, um, now called Holiday Court, where there was a one single family home, they tore it down, they put up four new, uh, single family homes. So that's what really triggered this. So the changes have, the only thing that we changed since December was to really fine tune the 10.1.3, um, to make sure that this language fits for you. And that is the district will not accept requests to provide service on a private road or, uh, except, accepted properties if a private hauler is already providing the services. Uh, there would only be an exception if the private hauler discontinues the service. And then the HOA or the property unit owner wants to have us service them. That makes sense.
That HOA or a private owner fires their project.
That's a good question. Yeah, I guess it would. I'd want to be a little leery.
It doesn't require that, it doesn't require that we take on those cases.
But it still allows us.
See, the way that it was drafted previously up to this point was that we wouldn't consider at all if a private hauler was available. And now we want to say, even if there's one available, there might still be cases where we take it. But it certainly isn't a mandate that we take it in those cases.
I'm just curious. It reads like if, if they're refusing to provide service to that resident, but what if that residence says they're terrible, they don't want it, they're not meeting the expectation.
Well, we could, if, if it still doesn't work for the district, we could also still say no, you know, because we're not mandating it to provide.
But it is, that, that is a really good question and a good point because somebody on a private road may want to fire their private hauler if they charge too much, right? And they, and we're cheaper. And then that could be.
They have to talk to us before they make any decisions because it's not going to be an automatic yes.
That's why I'm wondering if, you know, this allows us to, to step in and evaluate in that point to say, yeah, if you're firing your private hauler, then yes, we can provide that based on, or no.
Yeah, we're not bound to provide if that helps, yeah, okay.
Mr. Chair, uh, yes, can, uh, on that, that property that it was raised and they built for, was there single cans or were they usually your front load for that, that horse out on the road? Or they had, excuse me, bring the trash and put it in the front load?
Good question. It is, uh, they're all have side load cans and they need to bring it out to 3900 South, just as the other property owner did. And many homes right there on 3900 South. So it just, it had helped, it helped our efficiencies and economies of scale.
I think, I, I just think that when we first did it, it was like, we have to get rid of this. And I, and it was like, okay, we're solving the problem, but we created a little bit of a problem. It's just weak enough to, to say, I love the reasons, they don't find us in anywhere. Yeah, it's just kind of a wild opportunity, if it makes sense for the district, to maybe talk to.
We don't have to. Yeah, and the other point with this is that we're not going to go out soliciting and try to compete with private business. If there's already private hauler providing, we're not even going there, you know?
Yes, I love that.
Any other comments online?
So we just asked for a motion to approve, Mr. Chair?
Now, we'll see.
Motion to approve. That is the private road policy.
Second?
Second, Anna with Taylor's Bill.
Thank you, all favor.
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Motion there? I'm trying to get back to my left ear. Uh, that's neat. Customer satisfaction survey.
I think you're on a different version of the agenda, maybe.
Figures.
So it's the, uh, Apple Award. Apple Awards. Yes.
Save the paper.
Um, and Hazel, uh, we have a new hire, a new driver starting. So she has stepped out to, to an orientation with our new driver. So I feel, I will fill this and then I'll, um, ask for Helen some input on any financials that we need to cover. But just to recap, um, we shifted from two separate banks of sick leave vacation to one, uh, paid time off, uh, leave accruals for our employees to take time off for vacation or if they need to take time to be sick or doctor's appointments, et cetera. So it's one bank. We went over that, you approved that in December, so that has rolled out. So this is an apple a day award that has been part of our employee recognition program. Uh, and in the past, what we would do is anybody that had no use of sick leave, we would roll over up to 32 hours, uh, into the following year of, from sick leave into their vacation. Well, that, can't do that anymore. So the thought was maybe we could put some dollars and cents to this award. But understanding budget constraints, I know last month we brought forward, um, now, well, I should back, can you scroll down just slightly? So now what we're going to base these awards on is, uh, you know, unscheduled leave or call-ins. So call-ins is what hurts us the most, especially with our frontline equipment operators. We can't plan for that. Uh, we, we try, but you can understand that that can create quite a headache. So initially, we put dollar amounts that were pretty high, uh, but I do want to offer some thoughts to not go that high. Uh, we were asked to, um, come back with data to show you the historical, uh, trends that have happened. And then if we had, you know, a thousand dollars for that gold apple, meaning nobody calls in. But this is based on minimal use of sick leave or no use of sick leave. So the gold apple is no use of sick leave. Historically, red apple is minimal, uh, meaning less than 24.
Uh, less than 32.
Less than 32, thank you. So that's just looking at the dollar and cents. If you can scroll down just slightly to the, um, to show, I don't know if you can show the whole graph or chart. But the, um, basically the his, history shows in 2014, um, and we don't have the data for 17, 18, or 19. But you can see how in 2014, we started with, uh, 23 gold apples and 12 red. And then over time, that has decreased as far as those gold apples, which is pretty interesting to see. Um, we can have philosophies about generations and different things like that, but, um, everybody, so. Yeah, I probably shouldn't talk about baby boomer, baby boomer work ethic in this. Anyway, so understanding that this would become part of our employee recognition program, and if it was dollars and cents, it would be anything that you all a dollar amount approved, um, would be on top of over a thou, $100,000 that we expend on safety, outstanding employee awards, the, the team appreciation awards. So I wanted to make sure that you saw the big picture of that larger dollar amount that we expand about every year. And then I would recommend that we don't do a thousand dollars for a gold, um, meaning that we could have 50 employees that don't call in in a year, and that could be $50,000. You know, uh, red apple is three or less call-ins per year. So my thought is maybe if we start a little lower and then with inflation, we could certainly raise that. But if we all start high, I would never want to have to decrease that over time, if that makes sense. It's the, it's a test. We've never had this kind of criteria and we've never had a dollar amount. It's always been leave that rolled over. So food for thought, and I do have some dollars and cents suggestions down there of possibilities. You know, reduce the thousand to 800 or even 700 and then reduce the red. So it's up for discussion and direction.
I'm only very, I think, um, you should also have one here, another option to grant additional leave hours. Um, do you have a sense whether the employees prefer hours or cash?
Cash.
There was some cost associated with hours.
It, it basically, um, it did, it would depend on salary, yeah, it would depend.
Yeah, the average equipment operator salary is about $30 an hour. Um, so of course there's that plus benefits, variable benefits that would go with that. Um, that would be for equipment operators on average, uh, for what they take for vacation, for PTO.
Diane, turn your voice to me. Um, what I'm wondering is, what is the expense of, uh, their calling in? I mean, what's the.
Yeah. So, um, increased overtime, depending on season. If, if during the heavy months like, uh, May through, uh, September, those are our heavy months with tonnages. So that's when we would see increased overtime if people are calling in. I think going into 2025, we have five mil, 500, excuse me, 500,000 budgeted for overtime. Um, and so, yeah, there is a cost to that. Uh, we, we've tried to really pull that out, see what's associated with that. David Ica, our operations manager, who is right back here, has read some reports. And I don't know if you can give dollars and cents or an, an idea of how many overtime hours go because of people calling in?
Well, speaking to, you know, um, overtime hours, we, what we, felt it was the greatest vacancies. So when we had meetings, those positions start field, which comes out really, really good group. Actually, when I'm five day work, we, we're not scheduled. So that's kind of been a consistent thing with vacancies. Um, I don't have numbers to produce at this time, but I can definitely bring them.
I actually have a little bit of info, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful and we have an understanding, you know, of what you're saying. But, um, not, you know, just to make sure we're doing right.
Um, I actually do have a little bit of information on that. I did not get this to Pam in time for this packet, so I apologize for that.
That's okay.
Um, but, and, and this is based on David and Matt Ferguson's data that they pulled for overtime. In 2024, we spent $348,145 on overtime. In 2023, it was 455,000. That's why our overtime budget is at 500 because we've had history where there was a lot in a year. Um, but that's gone down to 348,145 in 2024, as I said. Of that, I believe that the driver overtime, based on David's information that he gave us on hours, um, was, would have been about 288,960 of that. And we discussed that, um, most of that, almost 100% of that, I think he felt was going to be from, um, call-ins, from people calling in and then having to call somebody back who was off that day and having to pay them overtime. So the average cost for overtime hour is $64.70. Um, and so if, you know, if we say that 288,960 of overtime was due to call-ins, then if, if we did do a thousand, I know we're talking about reducing that amount, which I completely understand. But if we did do a thousand, um, and we had every person in Wolford get a thousand dollars, then that would be $99,000, which would net save us $188,000, um, for 2024, if we did the thousand dollars.
So, so that's strictly from calling or is that from vacancies as well, did we not?
Um, I assumed it was call-ins. I thought I heard, maybe I'm wrong, I'm sending this to you. Um, I thought I heard you say when you broke it down to the drivers that, um, almost all of that was from. Working on the fifth day, yeah.
For vacancies and, you're just a combination.
Oh, okay, so it wouldn't be quite $288,000, which was my assumption. Um, but I still think we would have, you, even if it was half, you know, we'd still save a significant amount of money, I think.
So as long as.
Good investment to me.
Yeah, as long as the net benefit is that we're saving money by giving them money as reward to effectively show up. But I'd love to see that part of the map worked out, but, uh.
If you help, you get to try to assess whether giving them an extra thousand or seven hundred dollars, however much we decide, it really makes them not call in. How do you determine whether that's a feedback or whether they call in or not, you know, maybe?
Mm-hmm.
Because look at the numbers. 2014, 2015, and 2024, two people. So what is causing the trend in that? I don't necessarily know, but you can just throw dollars in that. That, that's my concern, because sometimes we do that with throw dollars at things, things are in fix problem. And is that for losing profit? Because I can look at how much of COVID was backed into these numbers, you know? Because obviously, 2029, 2020, you know, how much of that was COVID, but we're at COVID in 2024 and only two people would have qualified for gold apple. So that's, and I'm not suggesting it's not a bad idea, but I just think we incentivize people with money. And money is not a fix all solve, but it's not an incentive for long-term. We have to figure out why the change in philosophy of calling in. Because obviously, you know, there's a deep trend of it.
Yeah, that use of sick leave, that's the hard part is I, I don't know. It would take a lot of digging to find out how many, how many of these were calling in or were they scheduled time off for doctor's appointments and things like that? That's the historical piece, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're changing the criteria now that it's calling in. And you're right. And honestly, if we put money to it, it's, it's an obligation. I mean, we're making a promise. And that's why I'm like a little leery about that thousand dollars. And it's a good frame to say we're paying people to show up. I saw your, look on your face. Yeah.
But I think there's value in starting low, like you said.
Yeah.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I, uh, thank you very much. Uh, Pete Towne Brighton, uh, you know, had some conversation of the very amounts were, great idea. But I, I don't know if I mess up it. In my head, I was doing the assembly punch card. So that, like, the first year, you don't call in, you get X dollars, you get X dollars. And then you fill your punch card, I can fix up, is that's where the, the increased dollar amount really kicks in. So they can project, if I can fill my punch card up, I get, I get. So they can project, if I can fill my punch card up, I get, I get the larger dollars. So it's, it's just kind of the, it is giving. Each behavior, because, and, and part of that is, I see that as commitment to the organization to some degree. And as, I would say, as people get old. So, sometimes that is what they, they. So I, I was just having a thought, I don't know if I had that thought after we hung out, but it was, I was just thinking about that. Is it, I, I continue to do this, but on the third year, the problem is, I get the bump. Versus, versus I have two different bumps, so I don't need a red or a gold. I have a punch card, so when I get to the end of the punch card, I get to pick dollars. So again, it's, it's trying to drive people to fill their punch card. Those are just kind of simple, simple thoughts.
I'm not for the age of the employees, but I think maybe for younger employees, that might be too far out for them to. I mean, I don't know, that might be somewhere, you know them better, to be that long-term planning, or, or to be that.
Two months might be too far.
Yeah. Well, and I'm thinking, you know, in my head, with our budget, I'm thinking cha-ching, cha-ching, cha-ching.
Yeah.
So, you know, I like the idea of having this award, just because we always had something to award people for coming to work and not using sick leave, or using very little. Now it's going to be, you know, don't call in. Then again, if it's high enough, are they going to show up to work sick?
Yeah, that's.
That's the hard part. That's the, you know, that's the balancing act that we have to do. So, you know, is 500 enough for a red and 300 for a, or excuse me, 500 for a gold and 300 for a red? And raise it up in two years, I, I don't.
When you look at some regret, can we talk?
Helping to shake liberties. When you look at the overall cost of it, $6,000 for 2024, I think it's worth maybe adjusting the, and going with a lower amount to see if this really incentivizes people. It's, it's a small investment to see if it's working.
I agree.
And then the other way, one last thing, and I'll shut up. The other thing is, I think it's a conversation amongst the drivers of, it's a pain in the neck if you call in at the last minute. That's why they, so there might be this building camaraderie, building a sense of commitment to your fellow employees. Okay, sorry.
I've got one question. Guys here, but what is the call-in deadline where it's not a call-in, but it's a schedule?
Good question. We're going to have to define that. So yes, it would have to be something like the day before, or I've worked that out with David to see what, you know, but it would be like, at least a day, in my mind, that, you know, they have to give us more than a day's notice. So next, that we're in, speaking, the question I have on this. I got mixed emotions because we're taking the money, we're cutting the money back. Isn't there any other way we can do this? We're not taking money out of their pocket, I mean, because we've seen the letters that came out right on you guys about your pay and everything, but that doesn't get kicked back. But then these guys, you know, the workers, they're going to lose money. To me, it may be an incentive to call on. I mean, because you're taking away my money. Well, there's no money attached to it right now.
Well, no, no, but.
But you mean their hours?
Yes.
Okay, got it, got it. That's okay.
You want to equal the compensation that you're getting previously.
Right. And then, I think.
Yeah, with integration, I think it's an accountability conversation and how the team works together. And I would keep it at 1,500, because they're going to do the math, and if it's too low, so what? But if it's a true incentive, and it's going to save you money as you calculate it, in terms of if everyone made it, the operation would run smoother, keep it at 1,000.
And to be fair, they're still getting paid PTO if they have it, if they call in. This is just an extra bonus.
And if it's the day before, you can schedule a doctor's appointment. All things considered, we're talking about accountability here.
Yeah.
I'm wondering too, if it would make a bigger difference now that they have all of their time off in one pool? Because if you, you can only use sick time for sick time, you can only use vacation time for vacation time, then you're like, oh, well, use it or lose it sick time. But now, when it's all in one pool, if I'm going to call on a sick day, but that might affect my vacation. I think my personal belief is that would have a greater impact on my decision-making than this.
Yeah, that was the main reason to switch.
Yeah.
Any other comments, discussion?
To me, we both are used to.
Keeping this up to Pam, or? I'm good with that.
But I understand the point. I understand the point.
I'm kind of with Robert on that too, where it's, you know, starting, you know, too low, but also you can't, you can't put the rabbit back in the box.
I think 500 is a bonus too.
Okay.
I do too, and I think it should be seven, right?
So, I mean, we can either make a motion on particular amounts, or we can think on this tomorrow and push it to next one.
Yeah. Seven days feels like, I mean, to one.
So I'll, I'll take a motion, and I guess throw your amounts in there, and chip spot.
You know, obviously, for the organization, $800 is the difference between seven days. Now, for an individual, it has to be greater. So I, so I'll just two hundred dollars last year of that. Yeah, so I'll just, I'll just put out there, do this suggestion here, gold apple, pay 450. Sure. My motion.
800 for gold?
800 for gold and 450 for.
Can I have a motion when I have a second?
A second. It's just that we just really have an accounting here on this, understanding that's changing.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, absolutely. I'll bring you all a gold apple next month.
We all need a sample, right?
Yes.
Yes, I keep forgetting to bring them.
All right, we have a motion for a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any other?
I know it would be appreciated, so.
I've always said, like, it's, it's good to reward our employees, and this, to me, seems like this not help reward good behavior and like shift the focus on.
All right, so. Do we have, we propose a second? Any other board business?
I'll just give the board a, I think, sorry, sharing this very.
Sure.
On our council meeting on last week, Wednesday, we did vote, well, we did not, we gave. Permission to move forward with our fee for our service. And it's the same as we talked before, it's not, the wording in the agenda was to exit Wolford and down towards, no. We've not moved forward to exit Wolford, sorry. We're moving forward to make sure that we're staying aligned with what we should do for our community. So we are moving forward with our fee in the next couple. If it goes out of cover, we'll see, so it's coming back the next, we must know, we report. You know, updated on that. And again, we're fully aware that it would take a vote from the board. And it would also take some negotiation on any kind of financing and stuff. You can't just leave and say, sorry, because, you know, there's trucks, there's cameras, there's staff, and all of the, you know, there are obviously a lot of things that you see there. So anyway, but, but it's just primarily, as I've said before, you have to make sure even on a council, they never stay as responsible as you are.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And? Okay. So strike's party meeting, February 25th. General Manager's Board. Board of Directors. Members of the chair.
Yeah, I'll do, I'll show you a program to us comparisons. And pre-look.
Do you guys remember resources policy, I don't know if you, percent sections, committee. Please turn in your.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Please turn in your confidential forms.
Thank you.
We don't want to furnish a company.
We want to appreciate.
We don't want to be punished by the.
Personally, collect your fines.
All in favor of a motion? We're sorry.
Second.
Comment?
Hi, Greg.
Aye.
Share a second. And Major.
You could probably say, thank you.